Welcome everyone. Before we get started, I will just let you know that we do have one board member who has phoned in tonight. The green light is Mr. Jones. And also, I'd like to... (laughter) Yesterday was Administrative Professional Day, and I would like to take a moment just to recognize Caroline Whitaker for all she does for all of the administrative professionals around the district who do a phenomenal job. So thank you to all of them. I usually have one piece of correspondence, but first, is there anyone from the public who would like to speak? Anyone who would like to speak from the public? And I have one piece of correspondence, a thank you card from Tracy, Daniel, and Alyssa Santos for the plan that was sent to them from the Board of Ed, the recent passing of our friend Dan Santos. Moving on to one of our favorite things to do is a special recognition. It's the CAS Superintendent Student Award Recognition Program. So I'll send it over to Mr. Giarr.
Sure. Yes, the chair of the year. Here, good evening, everyone. It's one of my favorite board meetings of the year because it's an opportunity for me and all the superintendents around the state to recognize exemplary students in their district. I belong to an association, Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendents, and each year they allow us as superintendents to recognize students in our district based really on three criteria. Certainly academic prowess is one of them, community service and service to others, and also leadership. And I can say without a doubt that the four students we're going to recognize tonight embody that, exemplify that, and certainly lead by example. This past Monday, I was at one of the Rotary Lunches where the Rotary recognizes students for similar criteria, and I shared a quote Monday at lunch that I think is important and relevant here tonight by one of my favorite authors, Simon Sinek. He said, "Leadership is not about being in charge. Leadership is about being observant." And I think the four students, when I read their bios and we honor them tonight, you will see that they embody that without a doubt. I do have notes because the bios of these students is long and impressive, and to memorize that would be impossible. I want to thank our school principals and school staff for nominating these students and doing a write-up that I think will let you know who they are. We're going to start with Clark Lane Middle School. Call up Mason Wappe.[431.13][431.13](applause) Mason is a grade eight student at Clark Lane Middle School. Mason's teachers describe him as always interested in learning more than what is on the surface, approaching problems in unique ways, and sharing his process with others. He's fully committed to producing high-quality work in a timely manner and giving his best effort to all tasks. Beyond school, Mason is active in many extracurricular activities. During COVID, he worked with his principal on creating mascot posters of his dog Zuzu on his deck at Clark Lane Middle School, where he's also a member of the Student Council. Mason runs cross-country and track, plays football soccer, and made his middle school swim team debut this year and plays fourth in the States in the 50-meter backstroke. In addition, he plays on the Bay Worth Travel All-Star Team, and his team won the state championship and placed second in New England last summer. He also sails, plays electric and acoustic guitar, and he and his father are attempting to hike Walt of the 4,000-foot peak in New Hampshire. Mason is looking forward to taking on a good number of challenging courses at Waterford High each year, and he is interested in becoming a marine biologist or pollution robotics engineer. Didn't even know that existed. Congratulations, Mason.[521.16][521.16](applause) Going to recognize another outstanding Clark Lane student, Marlena Chines.[533.04][533.04](applause) Marlena is also a grade eight student at Clark Lane Middle School. Is described as always attentive and engaged, giving all to her assignments, being a role model to her fellow classmates, and lifting up those around her. She is educated about and interested in important topics in our world like equity and feminism, and she's always thoughtful and respectful to others. Marlena is a leader in every way and is a role model for all around her. She has learned the meaning of commitment and dedication through her various extracurricular activities. She has played basketball, soccer, and softball for local recreation and parks programs as well as AAU programs. She strives to be a team player and a leader as she encourages her teammates while showing gratitude and respect to coaches and officials. She is also a member of the GSA and art clubs. She also volunteers at many activities such as the soup kitchen, unified softball and basketball, as well as at her church helping to raise funds for youth group mission trips and playing percussion and singing during services. She is planning a career in STEM, most likely engineering.[607.41][607.41](applause) I told you, they're impressive. We move on to Waterford High School, and I'd like Vincent Antonelli to step forward.[623.29][623.29](applause) Right off the course, I was... Vincent is a senior... Can you turn around so people can see?[638.82][638.82](laughter) Vincent is a senior at Waterford High and has served the community through his membership of the Boy Scouts from first grade through senior year. He has served as a senior patrol leader. I was one of those. It's an important position. Working closely with his scoutmaster in meeting preparation and scout mentorship to younger scouts. Through his Eagle Scout project of constructing little libraries in Waterford, there's one at the Dog Park, Mary Field, and Scout Hall, Vincent demonstrated service to others, spending over 350 hours on this project from planning to final construction. He also focuses on his academic work and is a member of the WHS golf team, as well as a bass player in the Chamber Orchestra. He hopes to pursue a degree in chemistry on a path or a path to a career in dentistry. And our final honorary of the evening is another senior at Waterford High School, Jordan Jordan was one of the first people that I met at Quaker Hill School when I started here, and I knew, whatever grade that was, eight years ago, he was destined for important things and a leader in this community. He is a senior at Waterford High School who exemplifies the characteristics of student leadership. Jordan serves on or has served on as president of the National Honor Society, president of the Chemistry Club, president of the National Technical Honor Society, and vice president of Class Council, and vice president of Tri-M Honor Society. Is there anything you haven't heard?[746.51][746.51](laughter) Through his high school career, he has taken seven AP courses, was a member of the Model UN, the Future Business Leaders of America, Science Olympiad, and debate clubs, and was captain of the indoor track team in his junior and senior year. Jordan's community service and work experience include volunteering at St. Joseph's Church and Camp Dash, and his work as a DJ since 2020. Jordan would like to pursue a degree in political science, attend law school, and become a lawyer and/or politician. Congratulations, Jordan.[780.23][780.23](applause)
And he was a Rotary student at grade, I remember.[789.13][789.13](laughter)
Thank you for, families for being here, making time. Thank you, audience. Great stuff. We have 2,400 great students in the Waterford Public Schools, as evidenced by the four honored here tonight. Families are welcome to stay, but I'm sure you have other things in your life to do, so don't feel obligated to stay, but you are certainly welcome. Thank you.
Great job, Jordan. Great job.[817.23][817.23](laughter)
Thanks, Chris.
Congratulations.
The chair in our meeting.
Yep. Have a good night.
You're showing me.
Good thing.
He's genuinely a nice boy child.
Do you want to consent agenda? Would you like to motion? Sure. We're going to be covering the minutes, monthly expenditure report, and food service financial report.
I move that the Department of Education through the consent agenda consisting of minutes from March 23, 2023, regular meeting, the monthly expenditure report for March 2023, and the food service financial report for March 23, 2023.
I'll second. Any discussion? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Any insensions? Item number four, reading and review of correspondence.
Nothing to know about mine yet.
Okay, so we'll move right on to the superintendent's report.
Sure. We had two excellent presentations a month ago. We have two outstanding presentations again tonight, one from our Special Services Department in Quaker Hill School. We are going to start with our Special Services Department, and presenting tonight is Kristin O'Connor. She is our lead teacher in our Waterford Transition and Vocational Program. As I'll remind the board, we educate students depending on certain educational considerations up until age 22. And this program, which many districts choose to either send students off-site or outsource to a third party, is a program that was brought in-house probably about 10 years ago, give or take, and it has only grown by leaps and bounds through the years. And I think one of the most proud aspects of this program for me is that its home base is a college campus, and I think that speaks volumes on many levels. You're going to hear a lot about the program tonight. For those of you who have been around, you've heard about this program before, you're going to notice that it has grown and been enhanced through the years, and I know Kristin is going to walk us through that. I know she has a co-presenter tonight she'll introduce, but I'll hand it off to Kristin.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. This is Mr. Carl Mowrle.
Alan Howst.
He's one of our job coaches and a great team member we have. Job coach will generally go out on-site in the community, one of our job placements, which we have many businesses that are open to through CBS, the Will. Mohegan Sun has been a big one request to attend. They just keep growing and growing, so it's fantastic. So we have somebody like Carl go out and work with a small group, one to three ratio, generally oversee vocational activities. Mr. Jordan covered my first portion, it's the history.
Well, I'm sure you have more to say than I.
Probably. We've generally started with about five students per year. We're up to 15 enrollment this summer, which is exciting. It's very exciting. We've graduated 25 students so far in seven years. We're going to want to be able to, it's been in the works beyond 10 years. This is a good project coming to place, to be on every point. We couldn't ask for a better place. And just to see the students mingle with peers is fantastic. They eat. At the student center, they mingle with them. One of our students runs the athletic desk. Kids sign in. They do the laundry for the athletics. They're constant and constant. They're stars, superstars in the family. We love seeing them. They have nice collaboration. Also, in those good years, we've received a grant, enhanced a lot of curriculum that we do. It's all life-centered. When I think of the program, we're really focusing on independence, the whole social aspect, and vocational training. So that is a snapshot. We're hoping, and our aim is for all of the students to walk away and be as independent as possible. It's also part of the program where we try to design it that they leave with adult agencies in mind, whether it be VRS and EBS, that they have these supports going on in the future. And they'll all have two days left with that, or they can independently employ it, or group support it. It's fantastic. I'll share this with you. If there are any questions at the end, please fill in. The students have put in a couple numbers as well, it'll be a surprise at the end. I can read this to you, whatever's... It was one of the service dogs at the New York Student Center at Kefir. Our transition team aims to need vocational independence and social media for our students by providing opportunities and providing settings and work placements. Through the implementation of the Connecticut Boy Transition Skills, and the selected program students provide a key concept to promote independence for their adult life. And our kids exemplified this, but there was nothing impossible to do as a child. Next up is a part of our curriculums that we use. There's sites on campus where they study. Also, I think when the kids are at Mohegan Sun, I'm sorry for saying kids, young adults, when they're on site at Mohegan Sun, they take time to a proportion of the curriculum. Some of the topics we cover. We've also been here to have students take classes at Free Rivers, and we support that in the classroom as well.
And these two, those top two are from Mohegan, everything else is Avery Point.
Here's some vocational placements right on Kefir campus. We just started, Husky Harvest has started on campus to be in the part. We've been a big factor in stocking, helping bring things in, taking, making sure that things, as you can see, placed in the right direction, taking them toward the portal. So huge collaboration. We're very much involved at the school. Goodwill.
Don't you love that face?
We always look for hiring signs. Doing various jobs inside, Mohegan Sun. Very extensive hiring process there, which is excellent opportunity for them to go through the whole application processes. It's not easy to get in, and they have to walk right through, just like anybody else.
And usually at Mohegan Sun, they do a thing called EBS, where it's basically they clean, they clean slot machines, they do the vacuum, and sometimes they do inventory, so it's like all the nuts and bolts, they have to count for the nuts and bolts, and that's their current project we're doing right now.
This is what we can see.
Yeah. There we go.
You're very much, very familiar with Mohegan more than I am, so.
Yeah.
Anything else?
That's one of the inner tunnels. We got to go to the inventory, and then this is slot machines. They have to clean the bottom, the top, they got to clean the chairs. It's actually pretty extensive because there's two large casinos inside Mohegan.
What do they call it? Myo? Mylo?
I think so, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's a whole lot of the atmosphere in there. And this is one of the slides for students, to make sure we put that in there. Our four has not been another partnership, very convenient, Avery Point. A lot of places that we are attending are frightened, rotten, so it's a bit easy to meet. Independence. We have Ms. Erica, who's Erica been in with the nutrition portion of education help through UConn. It's fantastic. She comes to see us once a month at the community center and cooks with the students. We cook otherwise as well, but it's extra special in Erica's.
Because of an opportunity to try out new foods they might have not tried out before.
And a lot of cooking utensils that here's Erica's set up here at the community center. Grilling at one of our events at Camp Harkness. Community, you know, so involved, voice involved family, people, community center, friendships are established, a lot of socialization time. We do get together with Mary Murphy's class, she's the explorers teacher at Los High School. So we try to collaborate often as the transitioning, some of them we also do.
Dream work, makes the dream work.
Some other social opportunities on campus. We went out on the Project Oak boat with Mr. Carter's class. It's unified, a nice collaboration with Brett Arnold and Mrs. Mary Murphy. It was great that, and we can't wait to go in again next year. I think we'll have some more height on our team.[1386.13][1386.13](laughter) Dancing with stars and other community effort and gathering is fantastic.
So much fun.
Yeah, wait to do it again. We were a little hesitant, and you know what? Can't wait to do it again next year. A lot of skill came out of that, these kids practiced. They worked hard.
Hours and hours.
They were great. It was fantastic. And here's our coffee business that we have. We serve over 40 staff members at Waterford High School. A lot of curriculum involved with that, a lot of skill set that has been answered this weekly basis. Graduation pass, and we have one coming up in June 13.
I'll be there.
Thank you.
Yeah, wait.
And thank you, Waterford Public Schools Board, WRS, EBS, and the kind dedication programs for our students, providing other services for the community, offering vision for that. This was a safety unit that we have covered, and the fire department, and we've tried to do as much as possible in the community. A song was supposed to kick in, it was nineteen, which maybe not right, but that was a surprise.[1483.13][1483.13](laughter)
Surprise![1485.13][1485.13](laughter)
Next up.
And we can start singing in there.
Are there any questions? No, I think this is amazing. Well, thank you very much. I feel honored to work with these individuals every day.
Thank you.[1504.13][1504.13](applause) One of the things that you've heard the team and I talk about is, especially coming out of the pandemic, is the importance of social emotional health for our students, making sure that they feel cared for and that staff care about them. Part of that effort, district-wide effort, is taking place at Quaker Hill School with their School Connectedness Program. I'm going to introduce Principal Chris Discordia, who will introduce the rest of his team, but I know this is something I mentioned in the passport meeting and said they're presenting in April. This is it, and I think they presented this morning to our district data team, so I know they've talked about this now on two occasions today. Done a lot of presenting today, though.
You have.
Yeah, you're doing it well, so keep it going. Good evening, everybody. So as Tom said, I'm Chris Discordia, the principal at Quaker Hill School. Excited to share a program that we started in 2019, then the world fell apart a little bit, and we had to put it on pause, and we brought it back this year. So excited to share about it today. I have our team here at Quaker Hill, Whitney Logan, third grade teacher, Tech Wizard also, Jesse Neath, special education teacher, our support center, and then Shelley Messina was one of our teachers at Quaker Hill School. So before the pandemic, we did a lot of research about trauma-informed teaching. We had noticed a lot of kids were coming to us with difficulties with behavior, all based on trauma, childhood trauma. We did a book club. This book is awesome, I recommend it, called Fostering Resilient Learners. And really from that, we came together with a project where we screen kids and we try to look to connect them with adults in our building if they're in need of connection. So we're going to share about that today.
All right, so we had some action steps from three different Quaker Hill committees. Our Teaching and Learning Committee, in addition to looking at the growth plan for the school and the strategic plan for the district, really took a closer look at chronic absenteeism across Quaker Hill School and thinking about how we need to address this issue and students who are, sorry, students who are having some absentee issues with especially illness and some school refusals. And looking at both of those places, we want to figure out which, how are we going to address them. Fostering Resilient Learners Book Club, like Mr. V just talked about, is had 27 members, which is a huge population. It included staff, teachers, paraprofessionals, administrators within the building, and we really looked at how trauma can affect children and how we're going to combat those effects. And then the Character Education Committee that we also have meet once a month, really looks at student behavior and social emotional well-being, and really thinking about how these three pieces fit together to address the connectedness of students and how they feel at our school. So we're noticing that students are not feeling connected, not feeling like they have a person, so we're really trying to address that issue.
So as Mr. Discordia said, we started all this in 2019, and then things kind of got difficult, and the whole program was put on pause for a while, but as soon as we were able to reactivate it, we revisited it and introduced it to staff and parents. And this year, most recently, we administered the screening, which made it a little bit, our kids were identified and matched up with a staff member.
All right, so basically how we designed this is kind of a flipped way that they've been doing it at the secondary level. So at the secondary level, they try to identify kids who need connections from a staff perspective. So a lot of secondary schools will put all the names of the kids up on the wall, and during a meeting, they'll go put a dot next to the kids they feel connected to, and at the end of the exercise, any kid without a dot, they try to connect with staff members. Kind of hard for us to do at the elementary level because every kid is a classroom teacher, so in theory, every kid should have a dot. So we flipped it, and to do an elementary design, we're actually having the kids select the staff members they feel connected to. the staff members they feel connected to at the school. So we actually built a screener with every picture of every staff member at the school. And I'll let Whitney show you that. We uploaded it right onto their iPads, so they can actually select it. And then from there, we could fly kids that had a low number of adults they felt connected to at our schools.
So this is what the screener looks like. So it had a picture and a name for each teacher. So our non-readers or kindergarteners, they, it was not, their ability to do it was not inhibited. This is exactly what it looked like. So they typed in their first name, they clicked on their grade, and then it's like a big button that they can push. So on our iPads, it was just a button that they could touch. And so we had our K-1 teachers, our 2-3 teachers, we had four or five teachers, we had another set of teachers. We had all of our paraprofessionals, we had our custodians, we had any, any adult that would kind of contact with our students. We had building subs, literally anyone they could see recessing. And we thought it was really important because sometimes they connect with someone that's not at recess, and it's not somebody that we would think that they're connecting with, but it is a connection that they are making. We also had QR codes, so it was really easy for teachers to use the iPad to kind of scan it real quick, so it would pop up. So it made it a lot easier to administer to everyone. And then the data went into the spreadsheet, and I had a formula that would calculate the number of staff that each person identified. And if it turned red, that was kind of like our marker, that, that student was flagged. So for K-1 students, if they had four or less, they were flagged. Or six or less, or two through five, just because they had been in the school for a longer amount of times. We figured they should have at least six connections by that time. And all of the data of the students that are flagged was carried over into another spreadsheet, so that they could be matched, which you'll also see.
The neat thing is, like, you know, some kids clicked on twenty-eight people. Not, not, so we could click on everybody.
I mean, there's over eighty people, so it's, yeah.
So one of the things that we found out from the screener is that kids feel connected at Quaker Hill. This was no surprise to me. Only twenty-two out of three hundred and sixteen students were flagged as not feeling connected to people at school. Ninety-four percent feel connected, and here's some evidence, it's our work. When asked what makes you happy, this first grade student painted a picture of school. She's new to our school.
All right, so as I mentioned before, we did administer this in 2019. So I thought a good way to quantify maybe some of the impact of the pandemic is to look at the cohort of kids who are currently in fifth grade. That's our largest amount of flagged kids, so if the twenty-two, eight of them were fifth graders. So I wanted to share some data from that and compare it to data from 2019. So in 2019, when we administered it to those kids, they were in second grade. Only four flagged, which was seven percent of that group, as opposed to this year, eight of them flagged, which is thirteen percent of that group. So there's more kids. It's not a ton of kids, but, you know, there are eight. I picked a couple of kids, and I just went back and checked how many people they clicked on back in 2019 versus. So one kiddo, fourteen selected in 2019, this year one. One kiddo, nine, zero. Another one, twenty-seven, back in nineteen, this year zero. So you can see, there's a drop-off. Now, you know, we've had a lot of discussions about that. Is that because they were sweet second graders and now they're almost finished school kids? Or is it pandemic? Or is it, you know, there weren't a ton of after-school activity offerings, and maybe we didn't have access to other teachers or other people in the building, because everyone's cohort and stuff? And that could have an impact. I'll say anecdotally, these are not the kids that you would even think. These are your smiling, happy kids, they're just really quiet. But this was a way to give us a voice for them and to try and get them some support.
So once the kids were identified, the teachers gave out these surveys to the kids in their home rooms, and they completed them, so that the person that they matched with would have a sense for what their interests and hobbies were. And as a basis, it's a framework for conversations.
So here, as Whitney talked about, we kind of combined that list of flagged kids onto another spreadsheet. And again, this is all stuff that Whitney built, so kudos to her for being able, it's, you know, free. She made this as a great tool to help our kids. But once we figured out the kiddos that needed some support, we looked at their interest inventories, and I connected them with staff that, you know, kind of in passing, I knew had similar interests. So for instance, our PE teacher, this kiddo, a lot of the stuff he put on his interest inventory was sports. So I connected him with Mr. Pannacost, and just kind of went down the list there. I did make a note in a couple of cases, if a kid had a huge drop-off from nineteen, I tried to really emphasize that, and we talked to the parents about that. So, you know, so far, it's been good. Again, this is, this is still in process. We started it in nineteen, had to stop, we're just starting it again this year. So we haven't gone all the way through and really ironed out the kinks, but it's just something we're excited to share, and we're seeing some good results so far. Just, so if a kid is connected with an adult, they're flagged and they're connected. Here are some examples of some things they do. So Shelley.
Yeah, so each adult that has a kiddo that has been flagged meets with their child in a different way. So it kind of depends on their interests, their schedule. We have some teachers who just make sure that they go up to the bus and give that kid a high five every single day. This girl over here on the right, she is creating some artwork for, that goes along with our character ed program. Some teachers have lunch with their kiddos, sometimes someone asks their kiddo to invite their friends, so that it's a little more comfortable, but there's a lot of variation in how it looks.
All right, so our next steps, we're going to continue with the implementation of this program for next year. We're surveying families and getting feedback, is the program working? Are students giving good feedback to their parents? Are they giving good feedback to their teachers? We're also going to put into place an interest inventory for staff. So when students are matched with staff, we want to really align student interest with staff interest as well. So once we flag our students, we'll do, we'll compare the inventory, so that we can make the best match possible. We also are looking to reach out to the community for partnerships. So for example, Waterford PD, can we involve them? Can we involve older student mentors into the program as well? And then next year, we're going to automatically enroll all of, all of the students with the chronic absenteeism. Those students will get rolled right over into the program. You know, we want Quaker Hill to be a place where students not just go, but where they want to be. And really, that's the motivating factor behind this program. Next year, there's going to be a SEL-type program. It's called DEVERO Student Strength Assessment, so this will align and go out in conjunction with that. That's a program that's going to assess eight competencies and help educators play instruction, document student strengths, area of need, inform progress monitoring, and evaluate program outcomes. So it's really going to go hand in hand. And again, it's a work in progress. We're building it. It's something that hopefully we will roll over the course of time, and it will get stronger as we continue to develop it.
How do you handle the conversation with students who gets flagged? Because you certainly don't want to make them feel more isolated, so.
We actually have a script for both. We have a script for calling the parents to notify them, and a script for talking to the student. The student is really basic level. Hey buddy, you remember all those pictures you clicked on the other day? Well, we're going to give you another person to, to check in on you and, you know, hang out with you from time to time. We try to keep it very informal.
And the parents are included?
Yeah, they are. And actually, we did just administer a survey to parents of the kiddos in the program, and we're finding a little gap right there. So as I mentioned before, a lot of the kids we flagged are quiet kids. So when I surveyed the parents to see, has there been a difference, are they talking about it? Most of the kids have said nothing. So trying to give, like, maybe the buddies can write a note, this is what we did today, or, you know, we checked in and talked about these things. So we're, like I said, we're still trying to tweak and something.
Have, have you noticed the absenteeism going down, or?
Unfortunately, no. Really, the big thing this year has still been legitimate illness. And it's COVID's still around. Every yucky thing is going through all the elementary schools. So not a huge bump, but, you know, it's definitely worth a shot.
Any other questions from the board?
No, I was going to ask about collaborating with the other schools, but now I'd say it's glad to hear that because I love the transitions between what's going on over at Oswegachi and then hearing this. Once everybody is all on board, I think it's really going to make a huge difference.
Great, thank you, team. A few other items of note from the board and public kicking off just kind of around the horn, starting with the high school. Waterford High's tech ed department, in cooperation with the Connecticut Technology and Engineering Education Association, hosted the 2023 SEA Birch Championship, that's an underwater rover robotics competition. I think seventeen teams from around the state participated, Waterford being one of those. We were the host school, so congratulations to the institute tech ed. On that same topic, Waterford High's tech ed department received approval to teach our current advanced automotive engineering class as a dual enrollment course. So students completing that course will earn college credit now through Gateway Community College, which as you know, with the automatic matriculation, those credits are also good at state universities. So congratulations to high school administration and tech ed department. Same theme, Waterford High is partnering with Eastline High School to participate in, quote, "the boat for the next generation" in the spring of 2024, so that's a year from now, where interested students will discover what electric boat has to offer in a three-week-long program exploring different trades, electrical, sheet metal, pipe fitting, machining, ship fitting, and welding. You'll hear more about that over the next year. Chris Landry, our athletic director, and Principal Kirk Samuelson will be serving on the ECC Executive Committee for the next six years as they work their way through the chairs. So we will be well-represented on ECC leadership over this time. Waterford High's business department has partnered with Liberty Bank for the Second Annual Credit for Life Reality Fair for the junior class. On April 21st, all juniors attended this fair to gain a real-life understanding of life after high school from a financial perspective, learning about savings and checking accounts, interest, credit cards, how all of that works. Waterford High Chamber Choir and Jazz Ensemble traveled to the University of Delaware for the University of Delaware's annual jazz festival for middle and high schools, performing ensembles from around New England and the mid-Atlantic states, convened and performed for university professors, who gave each ensemble valuable detailed performance evaluation feedback. Congratulations to Waterford High's Joseph Mayer for receiving one of the overall outstanding soloist awards at the University of Delaware Jazz Festival. So well-represented on the national level down there. Clark Lane, on March 31st, Mr. John Halligan, who had previously presented at the high school a month or two ago, presented an anti-bullying message presentation to all Clark Lane students that was powerful and based upon the story of his son, Ryan, who committed suicide after being harassed during the very early stages of social media platforms. And I know Mr. Sacks told me that was a pretty powerful afternoon at Clark Lane. Speaking of presentations, at Clark Lane in April, all students also participated in an interactive presentation by the Connecticut State Police, who's part of the trooper James White, who's part of the Connecticut State Police Dare Task Force. Students had their devices and were in the cafeteria participating in a social media presentation on things such as what is a digital footprint? How people masquerade as others online, negative focus, negative groups that exist online, and how to prevent such things as swatting. The same, same, similar program was presented that night or the next day at Waterford High's auditorium for all district parents. Also at Clark Lane, our school-based health clinic partner, UCFS, is sponsoring a Girls on the Run group after school. It's a grant-funded program to build leadership and confidence in schoolgirls. And the program ends in an exciting 5K run in early May. Thank you to UCFS for partnering with us on that. Mr. Roca, who's an eighth-grade history teacher at Clark Lane, received a grant from Mohegan Sun, and fifty students attended a field trip to their museum right before the break. They learned a great deal about the culture and customs of the Mohegan Tribe and their history in eastern Connecticut. Last but not least, at Clark Lane, Latin, Spanish teacher Nick Giore was awarded a Fund for Teachers grant. You've heard me mention those in previous years, and we've had about almost twenty teachers now take advantage of this program. Where you write a, it's an extensive competitive grant application. You write a proposal, and he was awarded a grant to travel to Spain this summer and become immersed in the language, customs, and culture, and he'll be bringing that back to his students. So congratulations, Mr. Giore. At the elementary level, Great Neck's Grade Five Kindness Council completed their beach cleanup project on April 21st at Pleasure Beach here in Waterford. How many pounds of debris did they collect that day? Eighty-seven pounds of debris collected from Pleasure Beach. So congratulations to the Great Neck Kindness Council for taking that on. Elementary concert season is concluding, but the Great Neck Spring Concert will be held on May 4th at Waterford High's auditorium due to the significant growth in the elementary music programs, and I know some of the other concerts have been there as well. Mohegan Tribe has presented at multiple elementary schools in the district to grade four on their history, culture, and traditions. And I think that concludes the report on the schools. Couple district things, I would like to recognize Principal Joe McCrino. On May 11th, he's going to be honored at the Connecticut Association of Schools in Cheshire. He's one of five recipients this year from across the state for the CAST Service Award. So congratulations, Mr. McCrino. You've heard me speak mid-winter about learning walks in the district. Schools are conducting round two of their learning walks, Oswegachi, the high school in Clark Lane. This is where teachers and administration in the building are looking at instruction across the school, saying, where are we and where do we go from here? And I know Great Neck and Quaker Hill will follow soon. Fifteen of our teachers recently completed the most recent cohort of our Teacher Leadership Academy, something that we started pre-pandemic. We restarted it here as we come out of it. And they presented their Leadership Academy projects last week, which we can certainly share with the board at a future time. Finally, Board of Ed will present their budget on Monday evening, May 1st, to the RTI for consideration. Unless there's questions or comments from the board, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to committee and liaison and representative reports. First, are there any reports from Board of Committees?
We, as hot committee, met just before this meeting at five o'clock, and we're discussing the class size for the future of Waterford.
Any liaison reports that would be learned, Atlantic Broadband, WYMSB?
I went, sorry. I went to learn last week, and the majority of the discussion was going over to the South East Army and starting their infancy through pre-k program over there, and they're very excited about it.
A table advisory committee wasn't close to report from that.
Thank you. Anything from RTM, Board of Finance, Brecken Park? Nothing, okay, good. I don't mean good, there's nothing. Moving quickly onto new business. First on the agenda is review and possible action of the six to twelve world language curriculum. So I would ask for my motion.
Okay, I will move with the word of the board of education. The provision of the world language curriculum for grade six to twelve as presented.
Second.
We'll turn it over to the group.
Before you do that, I'd like to make a little statement. These are the stack of wonderful curriculum that we receive. And first, let me say that I found it extremely hard to thoroughly review the five curriculums, even though extra time was given, and I'm a retired educator. I strongly suggest that only one curriculum be brought forth at a time, and that the guide or explanation cover be included for all board members, explaining what a good curriculum should look like. After consulting with other educators and looking at state expectations for and the purpose of a curriculum guide, I came to the conclusion purpose of a curriculum guide, I came to the conclusion that some of what was submitted was lacking, especially in the area of learning activities. The purpose of a subject's curriculum is to delineate the whole learning experience in a way that allows the teachers, the students, the parents, and the general public to understand what and how exactly each lesson is being taught and assessed. They should be easy to understand, they should develop skills and knowledge listed and theory, they should be varied and engaging and challenging. In my opinion, this is not consistently apparent in all the guides submitted. In this time of heightened examination of our public school system, it is imperative that we meet professional standards and are transparent in everything we do, especially in our curriculum guides. And then I have comments for each one. I know you put a lot of hard work into this, but some of them reflect more work than others.
Thank you. I'll call on the world language.
So I'm gonna ask Amanda Marquis to come up as World Language Department Chair. She will acknowledge the members of her department, and also Nate Wheeler's gonna come up to help present. And do you have the?
As they're getting set up, I could just make a couple general comments. First, I just want to thank Mr. Powers and, most importantly, the teachers who've been invested in this work for the last two years. I know, given the circumstances in which we've all lived, both not only our private lives, but certainly our public lives in schools, I know the last thing, the last thing, but one of the things on your mind was this curriculum work and the challenge in educating kids in this environment and writing curriculum over these last two or three years, your efforts do not go unnoticed, they're immensely appreciated. Our kids will only benefit from this work, but I'd be remiss if I didn't thank you for your hard work over these last couple of years, doing double duty, triple duty at the same time. So there goes for all curriculum committees, yes, world language, but I want to make sure it's directed at all of the curriculum committees where this went on, so.
So good evening, everyone. My name is Amanda Marquis, I'm the World Language Department Chair, six to twelve. This is Nate Wheeler, he's our ASL and Latin teacher at the high school. We also have tonight Elizabeth Cano, Spanish teacher, Sam Shay, French teacher, and Sarah Champ, Spanish teacher. And this is our overview of our curriculum rewrite for this year. So we renewed all the curricula in our department, except for the two newest semester courses, which we presented last year. So for French and Spanish, our focus was on allowing students access to be able to eventually produce in the language that they study throughout all the four skill areas, reading, writing, listening, and speaking, over all modes of communication, and being able to do that to an extent at every level, six to twelve.
For Latin, we revamped a bit with both middle and high school, working to make sure all students have access to the tools needed in 21st century and making sure those are aligned. And then we also updated the mythology course to keep it aligned to classical tradition.
And all right, we have two new courses to present to you tonight, American Sign Language Two, that's a follow-up from American Sign Language One from last year, and a new Latin Five course that would be an early college experience through that class. In addition to our renewal, we extensively researched and highlighted, tried out different instructional materials to go along with these classes. For American Sign Language, we're requesting just the follow-up to the ASL One materials from last year, which is True Way ASL, it's an online program that's deaf-owned and deaf-centered, or deaf, sorry, deaf-created content, so it's all authentic resources for the American Sign Language course. For French, we are requesting some renewals of site licenses for online sources and some new sources that will help students in our programs to prepare for, for example, AP tests, a by-literacy test, higher education, and really just to be a global citizen in after high school. Same thing for Spanish. What we see in the materials for French and Spanish is access to authentic sources, authentic native speakers, writings, and these sources also will help prepare the students for the APE ECE course, that's the culminating course for Spanish, by-literacy exam, college, college entrance exams, and again, to be in the global society.
All right, so I'll talk about one of our new courses, ASL Two, which, as we said, is a continuation of ASL One. We, I titled it Kiss This, which in ASL is this, and it's just a continuation of something that you love to do when it's a hobby or skill, so I thought that was fitting. It's a deaf idiom, as you use. So the course itself is looking at building conversational skills and being able to communicate at a novice intermediate level with members of the deaf community. We're gonna continue in that modified immersive environment where instruction is predominantly in sign language from day one, and really, it's going to continue to focus on how rooted Connecticut is in the history of ASL and deaf culture. The next new course is Latin Five ECE, as we said, which will be college bearing, college credit bearing for our students, and it will be a culminating course for students who are able to enter Latin Two from the middle school based on their experience there. And this will allow them to be able to get two years of college credit from Latin Four and then also Latin Five, really looking at a culminating course focused on Virgils and Neat and different passages from that, and looking at how it connects to the Homeric tradition, and will continue to use our tiered reading experience, which really helps the course stay differentiated, but allow all students to reach the authentic text.
And this is our team of world language teachers who all worked very hard on these curriculum documents.
Are there any questions, comments from the board?
I had originally questioned why classical mythology was put in the language programs, because it talked about note-taking and closed reading and comprehensive skills, and I thought it fit more appropriately in the language, or even with the Roman Greek ethics, we'll go even in social studies. But I appreciate your explanation of that, and I understand that it's an every-other-year course that is connected with the Latin. In it, you said something about you look at original texts. Are those original translations, do they ever see the Latin part of it?
We reference both the Latin and the original, depending on the material or the story that we're reading.
Okay.
So we tie that in as much as we can, especially in the rewrite of the curriculum.
I also question why in the goals you listed, as well as written and spoken language as part of the goal, you added sign language in Spanish and Latin and French, not just in sign language. And in the, even in the nine through twelve, you use visuals. I hope we're not relying too much on the sign language or visuals and are really honing in on the actual foreign languages themselves, because you said in the upper-level courses, the visuals and the sign language are not included.
So I think you're, are you referencing the actual standards ones?
No, it was in the goals.
Yeah, the actual standard. Yeah, so to address the visuals, as you get higher into the standards and what you're seeing in levels four and five, it takes away the need for the visuals, because it's kind of like it's a helper, so to speak, in the, in the lower levels, which they don't need anymore when they get up to the higher levels.
I'm used to talking with my hands all the time.
Right, exactly, exactly. And in terms of the signs, the language and the standards for world language is general for both.
It's encompassing of all.
So it includes sign language and spoken languages and Latin.
And so we just took the standard and put it for every single language.
Yep.
And then the other comment I had was that I really would like every one of the curriculums to, for everyone to go through the learning activities again and look at the action verbs that, you know, students will do this and this and that, rather than just a list of this video is being shown, or, you know, but have it more definitely an active learning experience. And there were lots of places where active learning experiences were greatly detailed in all the curriculums, but I think a review of the learning activities on all the curriculums would be beneficial to make it more uniform and more meaningful.
We appreciate that point, looking into that. I think also the way that it's built too, we have the learning targets, which have a lot of those action-based stages.
Right.
What you're saying, to try and tie it to the activity.
Well, that's what the learning, to me, that's where the learning activity is, you know, and that's what it's tied in, learning activity, and it shouldn't just be a resource. What, you know, it doesn't even say, watch this video, it just says video, or it just says comments, or something like that, you know, in the world language. Whereas to me, it should say, discussion or, you know, whatever.
And so that clarity is noted. I'll just say, you know, as we've gone down to a more in-depth curriculum review, we've used to just do the standards, now we're kind of doing kind of what's in the unit, so we wanted to make sure that the requisite activities and materials were there for the educators. With that said, your point is noted.
Good. Any other questions or comments from the board? Joyce?
I'm pleased to see sign language two. Thank you. That's really nice. I do echo the learner's experience, which should be outlined in the learning activity, When, when I read this, I need to be able to visualize the class and what is happening. Are they all sitting at a computer? Are you instructing them? Are they working in groups? So I think that's the level of detail that would be really helpful to us, so that we can see that, you know, through seventh grade, they're just not all sitting at a computer from September to June, right? I know you talked a lot about resources. I'd like you to be more detailed on that. I know last year we talked about virtual reality headsets and doing some work with that, so when you talk about computer resources, have you gone there yet, or, you know, what specifically are those resources that you want to incorporate?
So we have purchased a set of VR headsets. Our technology coaches are offering opportunities for classroom teachers to learn about it, and world language is one of them, but others are there, and when the educators become really comfortable with that technology and we can develop how, what resources to access within the VR world, we would certainly include it in the curriculum.
Yeah.
And I think you'll find in the next item, and then letter F for nine through twelve social studies, any broad, you know, resources, textbooks, the major instructional materials obviously have to be approved by the board. I think if, you know, this is, next comment's not unique to world language, I think perhaps at a future meeting, what I could have Craig do is walk you through a blank template of the curriculum document and explain the various, it's, I will tell you, it's not been my experience to break curriculum down right down to day one, we're gonna do this, activity day two, that, that's not really what a curriculum document's function and form is for, so I think it may be helpful to walk through the curriculum document. We do work with Allison Zamuna, a national expert on curriculum development, all of our committees have access to her, so I think at a future meeting, maybe next fall, we can walk you through the curriculum document, and that might be a time to flesh out some of this.
I think that would be very helpful.
Yes, I would like that. And I do appreciate from all of the curriculum that I have read, there has been a real effort, and I'm so happy to see it, that you are really trying to get the learners to the Bloom's higher-level thinking skills, because when I do look at the task and the I can statements, you're getting there, right? Of course, I'd like to see more, but, you know, especially towards the end of the units, so, you know, I, I do this for a living, for adult learners, so when I review curriculum, I like to see that transition and the scaffolding of those cognitive skills, and I, I'm starting to see it, and it's exciting. So, and I know getting into the details of learning activities is really, really hard. I know that I'm really putting a lot on there, but once you get there, it's so much easier, and everything is so much more consistent between classrooms and between teachers, so that's just my comment on that.
So you're noticing the vision of a graduate?
Yes.
You're noticing our strategic plan actually being realized and executed through the curriculum?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else? So we do have a motion on the floor in a second. All in favor?
Hi.
Anyone opposed? And any abstentions? Thank you.
Thank you, world language.
Thank you. The mayor says that the textbooks and instructional.
So the initial notification of textbooks, we've given you a list for the two departments requesting, and as usual, they filled out the form on instructional materials to vet multiple sources before they made their recommendations. Sample copies are there. If you wanted to borrow any, I just ask you to let Caroline know so that we can get it back and then ultimately get it into the hands of the teachers. Thank you.
Moving on to item C, review and possible action of the grade six to eight math curriculum.
So it's my pleasure to have Heather Joyner, our curriculum leader for the middle school, come up. I will say, you know, a few years ago, we spent a lot of energy retooling middle school math, and we didn't do the hard work of bringing the curriculum up to speed, so this particular curriculum is almost catching up to the practice, and we refined the practice in this renewal. Heather?
Just a pause, Heather. Yes. Excuse me. That's okay. I'd just like to ask for a motion.
I move with the Waterford Board of Education approving the Austin mathematics curriculum for grade six to eight as presented.
And a second, please. I'll step in, thank you. Here we go, you're on.
All right, thank you. A little nervous. All right, so I.
Heather, don't be nervous, I'm dancing with the car.
I came in second, thank you, Mr. Jones. Tied with my daughter.
I explode, Heather, I'm a jet.
I know, that's why I can brag about it.
Right, don't be nervous, all right, let's go, I got ice cream in the car here.
It's gonna be melted, I got long speech here, it's painless. All right, so this, as Mr. Powers said, is really a revision. We've, we've been, I feel like, I was here in 2000, it was a long time ago, that we did math before, I was here and I presented it, and in that time, we've, we've really grown in what we've done. When we met this summer, one of the first things, our big idea was to really talk with my gellis and make sure that our six to twelve curriculum, what we were presenting, was really aligned, so we wanted to make sure everything that we're presenting from
And in that time, we've really grown in what we've done. When we met this summer, one of the first things, our big idea was to really talk with Mike Ellis and make sure that our six to twelve curriculum, what we were presenting, was really aligned. So we wanted to make sure everything that we're presenting from sixth grade up through their senior year, we're covering all of those standards that need to come in. So that was one of our first tasks. And it was nice to have Mike Ellis from the high school be part of that conversation and help us because he also was familiar with this process, filling in all of these boxes, making sure that we did everything that we were supposed to. So in the curriculum itself, we took the standards for each grade and we connected them directly with the vision of the graduate. So we took the standards and, more importantly, the math practices, which are those make sense of problems and persevere in solving them, and reason abstractively and quantitatively, things that we see from kindergarten all the way up to high school, making sure that they connect with our vision of the graduate. Can they communicate these ideas? Can, are they self-directed? Can they think about those research and understanding, all of those vision of the graduate things? So that was one of the first things we did for each unit. We took the standards, connected them with the math practices, connected them to the vision of the graduate. That was our purpose too. As we kind of dug deeper into the curriculum, we wrote the essential questions for each unit. So that was kind of the hardest part, is really asking that question. What is gonna be learned? What are we asking kids to learn in this unit? What's the question that they need? And then connecting it to all of those learning ideas. What do we expect kids to be able to do within the unit? Making sure that these are written in student-friendly language so that the kids could know. I can put these on my board every morning so that kids know, this is your job. You need to be able to scale and label a coordinate grid to graph something that's in the form like wasn't explicit, knowing that that's what you need to do. So that was the next job. And one thing, and I didn't include the correct pictures, but in the curriculum document that you have, there's all this green and yellow highlighting that's going on. And what we did is usually for each unit, there were two essential questions. And so we'd assign one green and one yellow. And then we assigned, we highlighted the knowledge questions. So the green essential question, you'd find green knowledge, you'd find green... I don't know that we did it with the skills necessarily, but it does...
Yes, you did.
We did. So it translates all through, all of our things. So the teacher, looking at the unit, has a snapshot of, okay, here's this question, here's all of the places that it comes, right down to the assessment. This is where, I'm gonna touch this and turn the page before I mark it, right down to the assessment to make sure that that essential question is covered all the way through. And that's what this part is. And then the final thing, I think, I want to definitely thank my team. Kelly Barnes, Kirsten Iden, Christina DeCastro, Jake, G and A, even our sixth grade teachers who didn't necessarily come in the summer, we definitely look forward to this. The high school staff, Allison Zamuna, Craig Powers, thank you so much. But our materials, because we don't have any materials over there, is the illustrated math that was approved a few years ago, which is really that student discovery of the, it's not so much, we're gonna learn about how to graph y equals mx plus b, where m is the slope. But, you know, it's not telling the kids, they're really discovering, oh, hey, this thing that we had at the end, that's the y-intercept. You know, they're really, they're really being able to find that through discovery within this program. And the piece that we pay for really is decimals, which is the computer, digital platform that presents all of these lessons. And it does make it alive for kids so that kids can see, oh, you know, if I move the line up, that last number changes. My y-intercept is now greater. If I move the line down, if I change it so the line is going down, my slope became negative. They can really see some of that happen, which is great. So that's our writing. That's me speaking really fast and nervous, so I apologize for that. But that's what we did this summer and this year, and that's what we've been working for. Not a lot of changes because it's been changing over the past five or six years, but it's rubbing on.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Joy?
Thank you for color coding. Unfortunately, it made it easier for me to read, so I have some notes, so...
Oh, maybe not.
Yeah.
I'll answer what I can.
Okay. So I quickly understood the KSs, right? The knowledge and skills, and they were color-coded. I was under the impression they probably should have matched with the assessments and the performance skills.
And they didn't? Okay.
No. So at least, you know, by number. So there seems to be less assessment and performance skills than there were knowledge and skills assigned. I don't know if that is by design or if you're supposed to match, have an assessment question for each skill. Have a, right? Do you see what I'm saying?
I know exactly what you're saying. So some of those skills, "I can" statements are really small. And so in the assessment, the question hits a few of those skills. Does that, I don't know if that makes sense. So the questions on the assessment are gonna hit three or four of those "I can" statements. Because the everyday teaching includes that, here's our initial view of this one skill, then we're gonna practice it, then we're gonna learn a little bit more. And then on the assessment, the question isn't gonna directly just say, what's the slope of this line? It's gonna ask them to do a little bit more. And so it's gonna hit a few of those. So part of that is because, you know, our assessment block might be fifty minutes. I can't give a thirty-question quiz because they're not gonna finish it. So we're trying, we give typically eight, and they do pull all of those skills together. They're multi-part questions that do hit most of those skills.
Oh, okay, I'm just checking to make sure.
Nope, and I'm just trying to make sure I say all the right words.
Yes. Okay. There was seventh grade, unit eight, on probability and sampling. It said something about comparing populations, but then it just kind of left it there for me. So I was a little unclear, are, you know, so what comparison are they making? Based on what, niche, genetics, diet?
My gut is real, and I'm teaching eighth grade this year, and I know a lot of all three curriculums, all three years, but I don't know every lesson specifically. But my gut is they're comparing, I'm not sure that that's gonna help me. If I could look in at the illustrative or the decimals, that's where I would see specifically what they're looking at. But I'm gonna guess they're gonna make scatter plots, or they're making, they're maybe doing median mode. They're taking these populations and doing statistic-type work with those big numbers.
On the computer.
On the computer and/or making hand-drawn graphs, or they're making computer-generated graphs. But they're doing things with those big numbers. Because that's that statistics and probability. What's the prop, what's the growth rate maybe? They're looking over time, things of that nature. So they're working with those populations, not necessarily, we're not hitting...
Yeah, because a lot of this work crosses over into other subjects, which is a nice link to, to be able to do projects, not just on the computer. Because it just seemed that every diagram was out of that computer program. So, you know, and I was kind of seeing quadruple by this point, right? Reading curriculum, so I'm trying to take notes.
And there is a lot, especially as teaching, because I haven't taught one grade for, this is my first year back in teaching eighth grade. I've been doing intervention and some other things the past couple of years. And so it is interesting to see how, okay, on the computer, I'm kind of tired of on the computer, we're gonna do bookwork today, and we're gonna do something on paper today. And so being able to adjust between decimals, which does have some really powerful models that it's nice for kids to be able to replay and see and look at. But then, you know, okay, we're gonna do this project. And one thing that I don't have necessarily written in here, but that we're looking at, is define learning, I think, is what the state uses for performance tasks that we're looking, because they have created performance tasks based on careers. So it's one of the things that we just were introduced to in January that we're starting to look at and see, how could these fit in? Because they, in reading through them, they're probably a week's worth of material that kids would actively be doing to show, hey, I really do know how to graph this stuff, or I know how to work with these populations to figure out these different statistics.
Okay, I just want to make sure that they're just not on the computer every day, all day.
No, because...
That there is a good mix of, you know, subject matter and those kinds of activities.
And they have to write it down. The number of times, I'm like, you really need your notebook today, guys. You have to get it out, because if you're not writing it down, I don't know how you're putting the number that you're trying to get. So no, there definitely is...
I will say, for those, I know some of you attended the elected officials tour. We had the opportunity to go into Mr. G and A's room. The advantage of decimals, and I agree with you, it needs to be a balanced approach, is that the teacher can see every student's work ongoing in real time. Students are given, the program automatically assigns them an anonymous name, and teacher, Mrs. Joyner, would know Tom G is really John Doe or whatever on that given day. And the teacher's able to monitor up on a screen every single student's work at real time and be able to target support and say, all right, Tom's not getting it. Craig's getting it. I know I'll touch base with Craig, but I don't have to spend too much time with Craig. I mean...
And I can come over to Kathy and say, Kathy, you really need to go on slide four with the rest of us because you're up still on slide one, or, oh, you haven't even gotten into the lesson yet. Could you get in and join us, please?
Whereas with paper and twenty-three students, the reality of that happening is not gonna let them...
And a lot of them, a lot of them like when I put on the summary, and they can see, oh, I got the question right. You know, they can see that there, because sometimes there are three challenges that I open up for them to work on, and they can see, oh, I got it right. So I can move on to the next one. Is that, they need that gratification.
But it needs to be balanced, because there is crumble fatigue, for sure.
Definitely.
Yeah, I was on that tour, and my fear of math made me not want to go into Mr. G and A's class, but I went in. And it was amazing, the different kinds of learning and interactions that were going on all at the same time in a really organized, but comfortable manner. So when we finished, my thought was, I wish I could have done, that would be a good place to be.
Yeah.
It needs to work this phenomenal.
And some of those, some of those models, I'm not sure if he had, there are some that are really power, you know, like showing that a cone needs to be filled three times to fit into a cylinder. So when I find the volume of a cone, I do the area of the circle times the height and divide by three because you can real, you can actually fill the cone and it'll pour in. And then you say, oh, I need at least another one. And then you find out, oh, it's exactly three. It's kind of nice to have that formula approved too.
I thought the performance tasks were really good, but there were some units that didn't have any, so...
There were some that, yeah, we definitely need to...
Are you gonna work on that?
Definitely, yes. And it is, it is, we are constantly adjusting and modifying.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments from the board?
I'm good.
Thank you, Heather.
All right, thank you.
We have a motion on the floor. All in favor? Any one opposed? Any abstentions? Social studies, this is a...
Yeah, so middle school social studies, curriculum leader Mark Higgins.
So my notes are on the computer, which I might have to refer to the computer every now and again. I apologize.
I'm gonna interrupt you again. I got... Actually, I did it right the first time, and I got thrown off the second time. So now something need to air out, and then the third time.
All right.
We have a motion.
I move with the Board of Education approving the adoption of social studies curriculum for Grade Six to Eight as presented.
Second? I'll second, thank you. Now you're on, Mark.
All right. Hi, everybody, I'm Mark Higgins. I'm the curriculum leader at Clark Lane Middle School at the Social Studies Department. I see some familiar faces, I see some new faces. I think this is my fourth time through this revision process. I've been in the district twenty-three years, and so I'm familiar with this. Now, in terms of the six to eight social studies curriculum at Clark Lane, when we're looking at like general content and general skills, there's not a whole lot of difference between what we were doing before and what we're doing now. And that's largely due to the fact that the Board of, the State Board of Education has these frameworks that we have to follow. So the state indicates that grades six and seven should be a regional world studies course, so two years of regional world studies. And grade eight should be a US history course. So, you know, we didn't have much wiggle room outside of that. What we had changed, and this is probably the single most important change, is our approach, the organization of the curriculum in general, and then our approach to the delivery of content and skills. So in the past, for example, grade eight, US history course, you know, we're looking at US history in a fairly traditional way, from chronologically speaking, right? It would be start in the beginning, we're looking at the Revolutionary War period, and we're moving forward. And as we do, we're looking at major world events, or major US events, sorry. And we're looking at, you know, important leaders and things like that. In grades six and seven, these were geography courses. And, you know, the units are divided up into regions of the world. So, you know, the kids are studying the culture, the history of Latin America, of Europe, so on and so forth. So that is still true. We still have a chronological approach in US history and a regional approach in the geography courses for sixth and seventh grade. But what we're doing now is we're adding this thematic element to it. So grades, grade eight is a chronothematic approach, which sounds like really complicated, but it's totally not. So for grade eight, for example, the theme is the pursuit of the American dream. And so throughout the course, the kids are looking at the chronological history of the US, but we're revisiting this theme. We're looking at these events through the lens of the American dream. And that allows the kids to kind of see how the government operates in real time. We start by looking at this, you know, amazing, amazing idea that the founding fathers had of the ideal nation. And the fact that they created this structure that allowed people who did not initially have access to the dream to over time gain greater access to the dream. And so that's kind of what eighth grade looks like. And in sixth grade, the theme is human migration. So we're looking at different regions of the world, and we're still looking at the culture. But there's a focus on human migration that's repeated through Latin America and the Middle East, or wherever they're studying. Grade seven, oh, I forgot to change this slide, I got talking, sorry. Grade seven is heroes and villains. And I think, yeah, this is the one that I decided to kind of highlight. So the whole concept, the whole theme that's driving the course is this concept of heroism and villainy. And the kids are going through regions of the world. They're looking at, you know, both historic and contemporary leaders, Fidel Castro, Vladimir Putin. They're studying the history that's connected to that, the culture of the region. But then towards the end, they're looking at the leader of this place, Fidel Castro, Vladimir Putin, and they are rating them on a scale of heroism to villainy. And they're doing this by taking different perspectives as well. So for example, you know, if you're looking at Indira Gandhi in India, you could be taking the perspective of a Sikh. You could be taking the perspective of a member of a political party. And so the kids are really, it's definitely higher-order thinking. And the benefit to this, like, why would we change all this? Because I'll be honest with you, I think the curriculum that we had was really good. I mean, I... I mean, I helped write it, so, of course. But no, really, I do, I think it was really good. But this approach, this thematic approach, and I can't take credit for this, this is, this is a lot of influence from Allison Zamuda. The benefit is that, well, middle school kids thrive on routine, structure, repetition, you know? Maybe all kids do, but I've only taught middle school, so, middle school kids definitely thrive on that. And, and this thematic approach is built on that concept. So, you know, the kids are constantly revisiting the same theme over and over again, but because the content is changing, it doesn't create fatigue or boredom, you know, because we're looking at this, this, this same theme, but through a different content lens, not contact lens, but content lens. And, and that piques kids' interest, which is good, because we want, we want to have a high level of engagement. But it also allows the kids to deepen their understanding of this concept, because they're constantly going back and revisiting them. Like with the American dream, I can say that the kids I have now, because we're piloting this this year, these kids have a much better understanding of how the founding fathers' vision becomes a reality as they look at, you know, how the court system and the amendment process can be used to change rights and give people greater access. And before, that kind of thing was done in isolation, but because we keep going back to it, the kids have a really good sense of how it works. Now, you know, content isn't the only thing we do, you know, like, skills are incredibly important. Content isn't king, we're teaching middle school, we're not college professors. And, and so we've always had, and since I've been here, there's always been a very specific focus on high-yield academic skills. So, you know, like the skills that you can use, not just in social studies, but you're gonna use them in any course, and you're gonna use them in real life, too. You know, we're not the language arts department, but we do a lot of direct instruction with those literacy skills, you know? Can you write clearly? Can you communicate clearly? Can you support your ideas with evidence? Can you summarize? Can you paraphrase a primary document? So we're doing that, and the way that we tweaked it a little bit more is, we've done this in the past, but we really fine tuned how these skills are covered, delivered, practiced within the grade level, but also across grades six through eight. So for example, like in sixth grade, let's say the skill is using relevant evidence to support an idea. You know, that, in sixth grade, we're looking at, well, what does relevant evidence mean? You know, like, what's a good piece of evidence look like? By the time they're in eighth grade, the expectation is, you know what relevant evidence is, but now, like, for this plane that you have here, what would work better? Like a statistic? An expert opinion? You know, a, a little narrative? And so, like, that's how they're being ramped up over time. Another way that the skill focus has been modified, I would say, in this new version of the curriculum, is, well, it's out of necessity. You know, since our last revision, which may have been seven years ago or so, I don't know exactly, you know, the world has changed a lot. Kids' access to information and media is so much greater than it was back then, certainly greater than when I started here. And so it is so important for these kids to become critical consumers, smart consumers of the information that they are spending a lot of time consuming. So we have, you know, a very specific focus on, what does good research look like? How do you find the author bias? You know, how can you tell when a source, you know, it contains some bias? And, you know, how can we rate things along a rating scale of bias? And, and so that's probably one skill area that probably has a little bit more attention than, than we used to in the past. Let me see if there's anything else. Oh, transfer skills, so Heather, Heather mentioned this. The idea that we wanted to make sure that, sure, we were aligned six through eight with our skills, but we wanted to also make sure that we were aligned with the district's vision of the graduate. And so the skills that we specifically focus on, communication, research, understanding, civic responsibility, I want to highlight for a second. You know, in social studies, we cover issues that, outside of our classroom, are hotly contested issues sometimes, right? So it's our duty as, as educators, social studies teachers, to teach kids how to engage in civil discourse. And, and we provide kids with the opportunity to practice this skill in a safe, structured environment. And, and I think that that is, that is huge, you know? We have formal debates, we have informal debates, and the formal debates really don't happen until eighth grade, because again, it's more developmentally appropriate, it's not so appropriate for a sixth grader. But that is a huge focus area for us, and, let me see if there's anything I'm missing. All right, can I read a little bit, can I, it's sort of parents that we, I, you know, we get parent emails. But I love this pilot, and I got this email from a parent not too long ago. Do you mind if I read it to you guys?
Long as you don't give the name.
I'm not giving the name, no, I crossed out the name, I know, I know, I know. So she said, "My child and I have had some great conversations based on the topics you raise in class. Our rides to and from school have been positively impacted based on the content you present. Thank you for providing the space for my student to sort out and validate. Thank you for raising topics or ideas that my student needs to think about and practice discussing." I mean, like, that's the highest compliment you can get paid, you know? And, and I think a lot of that is, is how we're changing this curriculum, you know? To really, it really is civically minded, and not just in U.S. history, you know, it's happening throughout social studies. And, and the academic rigor, I could keep going on. The last thing I want to say, because I talk a lot, so I'm gonna try not to do that too much, I'm sorry. You know, in terms of resources, we, you probably see that we haven't made a huge request for resources, in part because we're not teaching a lot of new stuff, you know? Like, I'm still teaching Frederick Douglass, I've had the same copies of Frederick Douglass, but I don't know how long. But the way that we're looking at Frederick Douglass is different. You know, like, what did Frederick, what did Frederick Douglass do that helped, you know, African Americans gain greater access to the American dream, essentially? We have also developed, because we teach social studies, and I think this is important to, I think this was included in the packet that we gave you, you know, social studies is unique in that, you know, times change, we're teaching about the world, and the world's always changing. So in a geography course, or even in a history course, especially when we're looking at how the past, you know, has an impact on the present, we do talk about modern issues. When that happens, we as teachers have to be really careful about the media that we're gonna bring into the classroom, right? Like, if we're gonna show a news clip of something that happened, we need to do the same thing we expect our kids to do. So I don't know how long ago it was, but we created, Matt Corderet over at the high school, and, and Zamuda, we, we got together and created a really, really good vetting form, that we're gonna do some practice work with over the summer, some PD with over the summer, to ensure that, that the things that teachers do want to share with their kids are the highest quality, you know? I think that's everything.
Yeah, and to that point, so, Matt Catterack is our high school librarian, and to have him partner with middle school educators on curating the correct material to share is important. And so we've developed a rubric, it's in the, it's in the educator guide, that we could probably expand to other departments, but right now, the concern was, there's no teacher manual in this new curriculum. However, as Mark said, we have the materials, but we want to be mindful that if we just pull something from the internet, that there's a little peer review before we put anything in practice, so that we can have a dedicated time to ensure that we're not missing something. And this, this guide is why you won't see middle school social studies asking for materials, but the middle school social studies team will be back this summer, and will be curating stuff from the internet, and using our high school librarian as that vetting source. Because, let's face it, when we were in school, we went to a curated place of material called the library to look at things, and it was a very defined place that you figured, anything in here is, is good. With the internet, it's much more of the Wild West, where you think something is good on the surface, but then you have to dig a little bit, and it might not be accurate. So this is why this is important. Thank you, Mark.
Sure, and I just also, before I totally finish, I want to, I want to thank Craig and Tom, I want to thank Tameka and Jim for all the support that you guys have provided for us, and I know she's not in the room, but Allison Zamuda is, you know, is gold, so I want to thank her, too.
I'm bringing your questions from the board.
Mark, I, I really appreciate your presentation, because it honed in on some of my concerns, and probably learned from my questions that I had asked you before. But the learning activities for, the whole curriculum for grade eight, I thought was absolutely excellent, and the learning activities are, are very self-explanatory and understandable.
Thank you.
It's not what I saw in the sixth and seventh grade, especially the seventh grade. I thought the learning activities were, I mean, learning activities, Venn diagram, hero villain, villain, that doesn't have an action look. Marvel superhero, hero's villain's development rating, of rating scale. That finally has one development in there, but you're, you've got extensive in eighth grade, you've got extensive learning activities that really explain almost in paragraph form. In fact, I thought the eighth grade learning activities were, of all the different curriculums that I looked at, were probably the best of all, but, you know, you've got to make it uniform throughout all, all, all three. The, I applaud the fact that you guys had brought in black Americans into the curriculum quite a bit. I do think that Native Americans have been elitist a little bit, and I wish, especially with Aswagatay School, and the Atlantic River, and New London's rich history, that more of that would be brought in. And I also think that, I think very strongly that the debating skills, the ability to have civil discourse, all of that was questions that I brought up.
Yeah.
And I completely understand that, that type of debate in the classroom will generate those skills. I personally thought poor hero villain competitiveness was a little much, but I accept your explanation, especially with, with middle school students, knowing that after they've done it four times, it might sicken.
That's it. That's it. You have no idea how many times it's directions.
So, but I, I really think you need to do, oh, the other thing is the ancestry piece. Being a third-generation American Italian, I will tell you that my ancestors came over and, and had very different experiences, and even today, there are people that could probably have, number one, not have access to their ancestral history, and number two, might be awfully sensitive to the, what happened for them. So for them to look into that ancestral issue might be troubling, and we've had a, respectfully discuss it in a dignified manner, it does not embarrass kids.
Absolutely.
And maybe even give alternative lessons.
And, and we have those. So those were developed, when we were working on that piece of the sixth grade curriculum...
It wasn't evident in the, in the...
In the, in the learning activities. But I, I promise you that there is, for kids who, you know, for whatever reason, might find it troubling to delve into their own ancestry, or even impossible...
Yeah.
We have developed alternative assignments that, that speak to them and take care of their needs sensitively.
Well, if you're a victim guy, ought to say it.
Duly noted.
Are there any other questions from the board? We have a motion on the floor? And votes? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Any extensions? Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Rounding out our curriculum team is our department chair from the high school, Christopher Gamble. Chris will introduce members of his department who are, are here tonight as well.
Before he starts, let me start this with a motion, so we...
Okay, yes, I move that the Board of Education approves and adopts the social studies curriculum in grades nine through 12 as presented.
Thank you, Mark.
Do you have the clicker anywhere there?
Here we go.
There should be a, okay. So the side...
I'd like to start off, hello, everybody, and I'd like to introduce two department members that are here from the high school. I have Courtney Hashes here, one of our fine teachers, and Mr. Chee, Ian Chee, fine as well, so, appreciate being here, I feel like we're outstanding educators, and I'm fortunate to work with them, along with the entire, excuse me, the entire department, which put a lot of, a lot of time and effort. So, so I don't forget, thank you to administration, central office, Ms. Zamuda, Darcy, and all the teachers in the department. I've called upon them quite a few times for support, they're always there, and I'm really, really fortunate, and I thank them. All right, so a lot of this has already been discussed in terms of the process, you know, so, we started, got interrupted, and then we started back, and here we are. And I'm excited to be here, actually. So, so I'm not gonna go over too much of this. Other than really, you know, piggybacking on Mr. Higgins, you know, the, the skills are really emphasized, and that's what we're trying to do with the reading, writing, and critical thinking skills, and I'll kind of talk about that a little bit, especially with grade nine. So the curriculum is similar and different than what we've been doing the last, you know, through the last cycle. So, for instance, Historian's Craft is a course that we feel, a ninth grader comes to the high school, we're gonna really emphasize the skills that are necessary to be successful in the social studies program nine through 12. So there's an emphasis on the skills, whereas probably in previous years, there was a little bit more of an emphasis on the content. Now, the content hasn't changed that much, we've been teaching these, these particular, you know, areas of Greece, Rome, Persian Carthage. Now what we're doing is, the skills are the focus as we are learning about these places. All right, so that's a, a big part of it. That carries through right to our Asian Studies class. Again, this was a course that we've taught in the past, and it's building upon the skills of historian. What we're trying to do is, we're trying to look at other parts of the world, and, you know, be more global in our perspective. So the other thing that we're gonna try to do here is make modern-day connections. So the past, there was a lot of emphasis on the past. This, we're gonna look at the past, and we're gonna work up, and we're gonna try to make connections between, you know, what happened in ancient China 2,000 years ago, and other parallels today. How those incidents, those leaders, philosophies impact 21st century. So that's grade nine. Grade 10, again, kind of like a broken record, the content is quite similar, although the teachers that developed this also wanted to get away from a Eurocentric approach, and they wanted to look at other parts of the world. You know, and that was a big part of our 2021 summer, when we, Linda Darcy came in, and we were looking at the curriculum to start off, you know, equity lens. So that influenced that team of writers, which Mr. Chee was part of, and that was their goal. So that carries with the early modern history course right to the modern history. So a ninth grader comes in, they're gonna take Historian's Craft, they're gonna take Asian Studies, and then they will fall into early modern world history, and then modern world history. Grade 11 is the main, you know, the mandated U.S. history, that's, that's the year that our students are getting their full year of U.S. history. The curriculum is, is similar, you know, there's some, again, we, you know, we had training with Ms. Darcy, Ms. Zamuda, so there were things that we tweaked there. I would say probably our biggest changes were in grades nine and 10, with slight changes in grade 11. So I just kind of tried to give you an idea of, junior, this is the path they're taking. So the fall, they'll have U.S. history one, then in the spring, they'll have U.S. history two, there is the option of the advanced placement as well. Civics, another state mandated course, kids generally take it in grade, in grade 11, it's a semester course, they could take it their senior year, what I have found, most try to get it done their junior year. Some do, some seniors take it. There is the alternative, Mr. Chee teaches this course, Advanced Placement of Government, which is a newer course, very popular, enrollment is, is really taken off. That course will fulfill that requirement as well. The difference is, this is a full-year course, this is a half-year course. And this is a choice of a child, you know, if a student wants to go that route, I'm sure Jordan Bungley was probably in the, you know, I hope he is. And then this is a list of electeds. So we have six... So we have 16 courses that we teach from nine to 12. Some mandated, some not, and I just kind of listed through. And a highlight is a new course called Creating Connecticut, developed by Ms. Hesch, okay? So we're pretty excited about this course. I think it's, I believe, when I first started teaching here, I taught a course where there was a unit of Connecticut history, that was in 96, 97. And then the curriculum that, after that first year, was rewritten, and it kind of got lost in the shuffle. So 27 years later, here we go. So it looks like a pretty exciting course, I think it's obviously quite relevant. So we had a nice group of people sign up, it's the first year, they're always curious to see how many, and I think it's going to be a course that the enrollments probably get to increase each year. The criminal justice class is a course that I teach, very similar curriculum, contemporary affairs. So most of these, I'm looking, the Black and Latino Studies was approved last year, the state-mandated course, going well, I've had the opportunity to get in and observe many of these classes, so it's a neat course. And then we have a couple AP Governments, or AP Psychology, AP ECE, European History, again, AP Government. Man, I did miss some.
Are there any questions from the board?
Of course.
So first of all, I really appreciate that you took the learning targets and you mapped them to the learning activities. Now, it's not consistent throughout the whole document, there are some units that the unit activities are not mapped. But Craig, I think that's a best practice, and I feel it would alleviate my concerns about the learner experience. I think the way the learning activities were written and described and mapped back to the learning target is a nice way to cover my concerns at least, right? Because I could visualize much clearer, and I would like to put that forth as a best practice. So, thank you.
And I appreciate that feedback, thank you.
But do go through, because there's a couple units that don't have it, the learning activities are just, you know.
Ms. Hesch and I worked on a particular class, and I know when we went back and did that process, there were a couple things where like, oh, yeah, we got to either eliminate this or make a modification, so that was helpful.
Because it really will help you, right, the learning plans? And thank you for presenting all curriculum in the same template. So I wouldn't say it was easy to get through them all, but it did help get into a flow, because I know last time we did this, it was different templates, and, phew. So, thank you, Craig.
Thank you, Joy.
Any other questions?
I want to go with Joy's, I also, I really liked the Contemporary Affairs Guide. I thought that was very well done, and should be used as a model to bring to all the others up to the same standard of understandability. And the Creating Connecticut course, because I was worried about the Native American inclusion, I did notice that it actually references a link to Quaker Hill, our local Quaker Hill. But I was hoping that maybe more could be done with the Aswagatay area, you know, all the, I live in the Aswagatay area with all the, you know, Canomac Road, you know, and the Iannic River Road, and, you know, all that sort of stuff. Plus, we have the Mohican Sun, and, which is a fantastic museum, and introduction to Native American study. I do worry about the abnormal psychology course being put in social studies, and I understand that there is a small connection. I also worry about the way that the abnormal psychology course is written is, in my opinion, really not up to par at all. And, but we only offer, we don't have that many students taking that course, is from what I understand. And I don't know the history of that.
Well, I think, and this is some speculation, over the last couple of years, we've introduced some new courses, and there's been some new mandates, so all students take Capstone. You know, we've offered AP Government, and other departments have started to offer some pretty cool courses. So I think it has affected some of our numbers. And I understand, I have children that are in the school, going through the school, and they, you know, when it comes to that time, they have to make course selection, like, oh, I really want to take this, but they can't, and that's fine, and I understand, they have to take the civics, they have to take U.S. history, the Capstone, and some of these other requirements, so that might be part of it. I, again, I've had the opportunity to visit all the classes on several occasions, and that class is pretty, it's a really neat class.
It's pretty wet.
It's a really neat class, yeah, it's an interesting, and there are a good number of students I've stayed in touch with that go on to be psychology majors, and they like the fact that they get the abnormal, and they also can take that advanced placement, they complement one another, so. But I, that would be, I think, why the numbers might go. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? I have this motion on the floor, and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? So this is similar to the other curriculum we did where the textbooks and materials are available, and they'll be introduced, set for the ladies' teachers. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Next is a discussion of the setting of the graduation date and the revised 2022-2023 school year calendar. Is there a motion?
Agent Chief.
Okay, oh, okay, the White Report, I move that the White Report of Education approves the revised 2022-2023 school year calendar as presented and approved, the White High School class of 2023 graduate date as June 15, 2023.
And a second?
No, I mean, pretty self-explanatory, it's the last day of the school year. Traditionally, Clark Lane is the night before, I assume you hold true to form, if not, we get word out. But, yeah, it's before having it on campus, on the football field, whether permitting.
Before we vote that, reminds me of some information or recommendations that came to South Ratchett's graduation, that board members, if you have immediate family graduating, son, daughter, grandchild, niece, please let Tom know, we want to keep it as streamlined as possible, especially so Craig and I aren't doing some sort of juggling act like we did last year, which I'm not sure that we did very well at.
Tried.
But we tried, and everybody got the right diploma in the end, but we want to keep it to close family, immediate family, so let Tom know. So we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any extensions? Tom, the next is yours, is the view on possible action on renewal of long-term substitute teachers? So it should be a long motion.
I move that the White Report of Education moves of the contracts of employment of Isabella Flores, Alyssa Gomez, Courtney Jamroga, Madeline LeMay, Bernadette Maka, Andrew Market Peace, Johanna Radichini, Radichichi, and Janelle Hemmings, not previously renewed for the following year upon their expiration at the end of the 2022-23 school year, and if the super dense school is directed to apply such persons in writing, I would say.
Just a quick comment, this is obviously not for performance reasons, this is a budgetary item that we cannot promise them employment for next year. They've done a tremendous job filling in, and we've needed them for a variety of reasons. And, you know, in a market where it's tough to find adequate certified good folks, these people have stepped up to help out our school district, so we thank them for their service. Again, this is nothing to do with performance.
Do we have a motion on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any extensions? Thank you. The next item, we have first review of policies.
Yes, and so, Pat, we can do them all together. I'm going to go by what the agenda notes say in the order, as opposed to what's on the paper agenda, so that we'll cover them all, but just for, I think, ease of the board members. First one is Policy 5000, Administration of Medication. We're, we've expanded it to include the administration of an opioid antagonist in our policy. It was an option before, and while we need, you know, doctor's orders and medical notes, there is a provision for life safety to have this administered by trained people. This has been reviewed by the VNA, as well as our medical advisor, and we're using a ship and a Google model policy. So I'm happy to address questions the board may have.
Any questions on the policy?
The next one is Policy 5060, food allergies, and there's just been some clarity around the continuous blood glucose monitoring in schools that now are reflected into this policy. Again, has been reviewed by the same entities, as I just mentioned before.
Any questions?
Moving on, Policy 2024, the retention of electronic records of information. The Office of Public Records has caught up to the 24th century by having a policy in place to dispose of non-permanent paper or digital image records, and our policy now reflects that, which is good because we have electronic records for all of our cumes when we move from the old high school to the new high school.
Any questions on that?
And rounding it out, then Policy 5160, which is 504, and the U.S. Department of Education offices civil rights, released new guidance regarding supporting students with disabilities and avoiding discrimination under the 504 section. Again, our policy now is embedding those guidance from the federal government.
Any questions?
This is first.
These are statutory, so.
These are all statutory, so you have the option to approve at this meeting.
Motion, I move that the White Report of Education approves and adopts Policy 20024, retention of electronic records of information, Policy 5000, administration of medications, Policy 5060, food allergies and/or glycogen disease, and Policy 5160, section 504, the Re-Delegation Act of Act 73, and Title II of the Americans with Disabilities Act, Students as Presented.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
You're opposed?
I think you.
He said aye.
There's a delay.
Chris, just to clarify, you were for this, you weren't opposing, were you?
Craig, you voted in favor of that, correct?
I did.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes. And in two hours and one minute, we already come to adjournment. So, anyone opposed?
On the note.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.